There we go. Okay. We're live! Welcome back, everybody. We're back in City Skylines. Um, we're having a town hall meeting today and uh, there's some stuff we gotta discuss. Okay, here, let me get our soundtrack of the day pulled up first. How y'all doing? Happy Sunday. I don't know about you, but uh, this is my only full day off. Uh, and I love it. So much. But anyways, alright. Alright, city is loaded. What are we listening to today? Jazz or lo-fi? What about this? Oh dude, the Drake AI song, low-key. The Drake AI song is crazy. Not what I needed though. I need a, oh, luxury lounge. Now we're cooking. Alright. Let's go ahead and check back in over here. Uh, the abandoned buildings uh, have been an issue since last night. I don't know what's going on. Uh, it's really just like the, I think it's like our commercial in our industrial industry. Uh, our industrial industry. Um, but I think it's like our commercial and industrial areas are just not balanced. So, that is uh, our issue over there. But it's okay, we'll figure it out. That's what we gotta clean up. And so this is kinda what I wanted to have this whole town hall meeting about. Uh, is like, do we, do we continue this city? Like, should we take it to 100K? Like, that's... How do I, can I put like a poll up? Am I able to do that? Let's see. Um, chat settings. Uh, how do I do a poll? Switch to non-mods, no. Trying to do a poll. Do we continue to 100K? Can I like pin the message? I wanna, let's see. Pin this message, boom. Do we continue to 100K? That's, yo, that's how you do it. Okay, perfect. Cause we're at 78,000 right now and I really, I would love to see this city like flush out to be a 100,000 person city. Um, but also like I, like if you guys just wanna see like a new city and like just start like from scratch, like with the knowledge that we now have. Could do that too. You know, so it's either way, I'm a happy man. Uh, we're about to launch another rocket, we're almost there. Um, can't see it on the runway yet. Or with the launch pad, I guess. It's still uh, they're still building it. Just tucked away. Um, how many visitors do they get? Zero visitors? Well, I guess the rocket's under construction. Damn, that is expensive to upkeep. Okay, uh, like should we even try balancing this over here? I feel like we just need to go to the Vermont district and then just keep expanding. Just kinda let this kinda work itself out. You know? Maybe put an industrial area down here. I'll give them that, you know? Please help them out. God, cool guy's Providence. Such a nice little area over there. The suburbs. Alright. Let's go ahead, back in Vermont, uh, with our new train station. So we're gonna, we're gonna treat it like we're going to 100K, but I would love y'all's input, like for real. Uh, as far as like, if we should continue. Uh, I don't wanna zone like that. If we should continue to 100,000 population. Uh, or if we should uh, shoid. Uh, just terminate, uh, not necessarily terminate, but leave this one. Uh, leave this one alone, uh, and then just move on to the next. Put a little store on the corner right there, cause I wanna, I don't wanna like have this be imbalanced. You know? But like the train station is also kinda the point of these industrial areas being here. And look at that. Look how well that is like working out. All the trucks coming in. Damn, there's a lot of people going in and out. Operating normally. Can we see how many like people? Light train traffic. Alright. Let's see. Could expand more in Apple Lodge 2. Trying to keep it as much as possible, I guess over on this side. Just right now. Oh damn, he almost hit that, what is that? Tractor. The real cereal. The real cereal. They have a job available. Hey, if anybody needs a job, they're hiring. Huh. That's funny. The real cereal. Over in the zen zone. Well, that means that we have a pretty good connection. So we should start to see these like commercial issues kinda dissipate. Put another store, not as big on this side. What is this guy saying? It sure is, oh, Amanda Graham, it's sure is expensive to live in this area. I hope the mayor balances the living costs with good services. Cape Hope. Is it really that expensive to live in Cape Hope? That's fair. Not really, but... Like you're paying taxes just the same as anybody else. I don't know what you're really complaining about, honestly. This is... Home of the Stuff Store. Okay. Let's just destroy that. What if we put... What is Cape Hope? Forestry Industry? Put one on the corner and then put like a small commercial next to it. I think the people would fuck with that. Right there, you know? Yeah, that's good. Gives them something to build towards. Let's see, we can go ahead and zone that. I don't know if it'll... Yeah. Yeah, we can put another one here. Perfect. Good morning, everybody. What a beautiful sunrise. Where is the sunrise? Small business owners always get the shaft. Wait, hold up. Okay, so Drew's Dami Mommy, people are happy, uh, and Slick Rick's Reserve. Small business owners always get the shaft. You literally just... Sabrina, what are you talking about? Like... Come on. Come on, we taxed everybody. Okay, so what? I damn it, it's all the density in here. We could change our tax policy, that's okay. You know what, we'll switch it around, look at that, and we'll also double their sales so that way they give us more tax revenue. In theory. Oh yeah, and we wanted to automate the tolls in, I think it was Foggy Parker, did we automate? Yes. That, I think that helped our traffic like a lot too. Seventy-four percent, yeah, so we're still pushing. We could always make this like a two-way exit. What the fuck is happening here? Why is this? Oh, cause this is a two-way. That's why it's slowing everybody down, so this needs to become a one-way. Can I not just make it a a one-way fucking road? Is that not a thing? Am I tripping? Like how is this a... That's a two-way. I don't have any... Where are these people getting caught up? Why are you motherfuckers merging right there? This is so weird to watch. Okay, but why? I think it's this. Yeah. How do we deal with this? First, we destroyed the abandoned buildings. No way this works. Bro, I'm just a master of traffic. Get this right here. And so, instead of this right there with it. And then just come over here, so this should alleviate that. At least some, maybe? Is this the, is this turn tripping them up? Who should I call if nobody picks up a dead body? Well, you don't have a dead body, so, well, there's a lot of people around you that do, it looks like. I mean, don't know what's going on over here. Like we're, we're having to, having to destroy buildings, but we're still growing in population, which is kinda weird. You know, but... I mean, hey, I'll, I'll keep going. We can probably build some more industrial area here. There's this, not enough goods to sell, yeah, what? You're surrounded by industrial area. Put another house over there. And another one right here. Should I put someone's house next to the park? I've got none. Another little one right there. Another one right there. We don't have like any demand for housing right now. But, I'm building it. Somebody's gotta live to supply the factories with workers. Cue the communist theme song. Communist theme song, the Soviet anthem, excuse me. It's a casual Sunday, okay. I guess we're continuing to 100,000 people. Uh, at least... As we're going. My domestic AI is behaving badly today. Your domestic AI? Is that what that high-tech housing does? We gotta clean up a pile of leasing. That's how we needed industry over here. Should we introduce high-tech industries? Commercial? See, but then this guy is saying not enough buyers for products. Maybe it's just the type of business? I don't know. Check on Drew's uh, Drew's little housing area over here. Oh dude! Very cool. Drew's sma- yo, I gotta send him a picture of that, holy shit. This is what you're missing. That's so funny. He'll get a kick out of that. That's actually a really nice house. Got like a little patio in the backyard, that's it. I mean, these people, whoever lives in the Beechwood residence can definitely see everything that you do. But, you know, it's cool. So we're gonna de-zone that. They have no demand for anything right now. Are we just in shambles? We're really not doing great right now. Like overall. With all these like abandoned buildings, like they're gonna build back. Build back better. But, I don't know. Fuck. Hey, why are they not using this road? There's some of them. Do we need another connection? There we go. About that. Just to give them like another offshoot. So nobody's still gonna take it? Okay, what about from here? We can take that. Okay, instantly better. Now we at least have a train, uh, jam over here. Just make the jam a different place. So this jam is not as bad. Theoretically. See, but now this one just needs a separate lane of just going like... Slope too steep? Get the fuck outta here. There's no way. Let's try this. There we go. Holy shit, on a stick. Wow! What a traffic route. Wait, so I can bring this one down? Hold on. Pause. I wanted to look at least, at least. Surprise, that doesn't need another support. That's better at least than it was. Like significantly better than it was. See, cause now we have like multiple funnels going in there. See, so they could get on all the way back here. They could hop on uh, Robert Street or Roberts Bridge. Um... Let's see, wait. I'll customize time, manually pin it or... Yeah, there we go. Okay, sorry. Yeah, so we've got, they could get all the way... What is happening over here? Ow. Sorry. Where... Who was that? Oh, Jesus Christ. Here it is. So they have the funnel all the way from back here. From Adams Highway onto Robert Street to Roberts Bridge. Let's see if we can follow one of the cars. He's going down this way, interesting. Oh, he's probably dropping off at the harbor. Colossal winds. Interesting, so a lot of these guys need to get right there. Hmm. So how could we divert some of that traffic? And we don't have a need for anything right now. Slope too steep, so we need to do some landscaping! So I think, and I also learned this recently too, I think you have to left-click. That's this one. A little landscaping under the existing road. Just for the sake of... That looks nice. And then, so we'll continue. We could give them an alternate route. Just to basically go around this, so where is it? Something we can just kinda like go along this coast right here and just kinda like landscape that. For what we need, so I'm gonna go off like right here. I learned this trick like so, uh, you right-click wherever you want, like whatever level you want to uh, have. And then you just like uh, left-click from there as far as like making it happen. Just to make that easy for you. Still sitting at just over 78,000 people, which is good. You know, it could be better. Drew! Welcome in bud! Had to make a new profile to chat? Wait, new profile means a new follower? Bro, we're up at 95 followers! Big boy. Big boy. Let's go. Dude, here, I'll, we'll check in on your zone here in just a second. I gotta finish up this landscaping I got going on right here. Uh... I'm trying to fix up some traffic ATM. Uh, this should be good. I just wanted to get you partnered, dude, I need it. I'm like so close, I'm at like two, I think I'm at like 1.8 average viewers, I wanna say? Like, it's something like that, so, but I need three average, three average viewers and I'm above the follower count, so like it's, it's all about the consistency, bro. You know, and like that's the thing, like, we're just having a good time. So we can't lose, either way. Look at this. Traffic diversion team. Nope, uh, that's actually not it. Uh, we need a slope between here. Um, here, okay. Let me build this. We gotta, we might have to destroy the road here. Need to slope right here, this is what I want. I want it to come in at this like four-way, kinda like right before that. Just terraforming the land. Dude, the city is busy as hell, bro. We're up at 78,000 people. Like 78,000 people in one place. Crazy. Putting numbers up. Boom, alright, so hopefully this will help divert some of that. We've got a lot of issues going on right now, not gonna lie. Drew's Dami Mommy. What a blessed place to be. Uh, we did add this office. I don't know if you were here last time, uh, when we added this office, uh, colossal orders offices. And uh, I will say I did have to redistrict uh, this half uh, of the district over to uh, Wolfie just based on uh, natural resources that were available. God damn, bro. So many people. Dude, your district's killing it though. Forty-six cents uh, per meter squared, uh, pretty good on traffic overall. Nice little farming district. Um, yeah, I figured it, it honestly, it raised your land value like Um, yeah, I figured it, it honestly, it raised your land value like per meter squared because like uh this district was like very undeveloped for a while. Just gotta go through here. Our economy is not doing great right now, I'm not gonna lie. Uh... I feel like it's gonna springboard back eventually. Saying that with a lot of confidence though. Uh, you know, I, I don't know for sure what's happening, especially over here. I know they need more commercial, but like... I don't know. I feel like they just don't need anything. They need is to get the fuck out of my house! I just recorded another one on accident. We're definitely de-developing a little bit. What if we... You know what I think it is? They're too smart. They're literally too smart for their industry. No, they have Industry 4.0. Do they just need more offices? I think they just need more offices. We have faith in our government. We're in a recession. We're definitely... Let's see, we can actually, dude, this is something cool. I think you'll appreciate this. We can actually see, so this is our population change. We've definitely, we're doing great and then we've kinda like healed out, you know? We've just gotten so fucking big, like it's just kinda like... And so we gained like about like a thousand people every hour of game time. But like it's not much, that's why I was saying, so I'm trying to, I, this is my whole like uh decision is like, do we continue? Here, city treasury, city budget. Yeah, dude, look, see, we were doing great over here. Shot up to five million and then we just kinda leveled out. And see pullback soon, too much pump. Yeah, no kidding. But look at our, yeah, look at our city value, just like shot up and then just kinda like evened out, with our population as well. Um, but that's the thing, do we continue this city to grow to a hundred thousand people? Uh, or do we just like call it and just go on to the next city? With our current knowledge, like that's what I'm trying to figure out right now. Our happiness overall, bro? Overall, what? Eighty-five, eighty-five percent happiness? Dude, that's a happy society. Ever since twenty-twenty-four, bro. All the way, dude, we're thirty years in. That's so crazy. Commercial zone, industrial zone, offices, prisoners. Didn't even know we could have prisoners. But anyways. Get back to it. If you have happiness, literally Norway. See, that's what I'm saying, like I feel like I'm running like a pretty good society overall, but um... Uh, see, it's just like all these abandoned houses, like people are leaving, like we don't have any demand, like... I don't know what's happening, like we're just kinda, kinda stagnant. I don't know if that's because I haven't been like growing like over here. What is this? Not enough raw materials. Districted for forestry. What do you mean? These idiots. Absolute goofballs. No, I think it's just the recession, honestly. I, I don't know what it is. Our economy's just in a downturn. Look, we're about to launch another rocket. Space program's still going. Even if everybody's... Everybody's leaving. But... God damn. Just don't have anybody that wants to go. Why is this motherfucker from here? I literally just, bro. Pocket! I don't know, man. Like I feel like it's just so built out. Like it's so much to manage. Elon over here, dude, right? I know, I'm literally with the Twitter coming down uh up here. But I, I like, should we just start doing like massive renovations and just say fuck the population? And just make it like a very like nice, like clean city? And like really like clean up? We can clean up the city, maybe not get to a hundred thousand in population, cuz it looks like realistically that might not be the best goal to have. So maybe we could stick with this city. But like maybe having a hundred thousand as our population is not necessarily the goal. But we can just make it like the best fucking city possible. You know what I mean? I truly feel you have the entertainment factor to be a streamer full-time. This is really... Dude, I appreciate that. I really do, like genuinely appreciate that. Um, cuz like I, like as much as I like say like, oh, I, I don't wanna be a streamer full-time, I would love to be a streamer full-time, bro. Cuz like who the fuck would not wanna play video games and just hang out, have a good time? You know what I mean? Like, bro, I'd be doing this shit, if I, if I could do this for a living, I'd be on here like all day long. Sun up to sundown, I'd be like on some like Asmongold type shit. Like sixteen-hour streams, like on some like sweaty gamer vibes. Bro, I don't, I don't give a fuck. I would love that. Are you kidding me? I'm like, I'm, I'm enough of a fucking nerd to do that. I, I would love that. Yeah, look at this, we have no demand for anything. Bro. RuneScape vibes. Dude, you gotta check out my homie Creamy's streamies. I'll have to send you a link to him next time he's live. He literally streams RuneScape all the time. He's pretty good at it from what I uh, what I understand too. I'm, I've never played uh RuneScape, honestly. Um... Can't run a good business, just get out of my city. That's all I'm gonna say. Maybe we need to de-zone some of this? Like, I don't know. We'll definitely just clean it up. I think, I think that's what we're gonna do right now. District needs better schools and entertainment for demand. Let's see, well dude, your, your place is very happy on Parks and Leisure. And with the unique buildings, I don't like, dude, the uh, the office and the grand mall, well, the grand mall's in Alpha Lodge now. Um, what is this over here? Oh, the Expo Center. I forgot we had the Expo Center over here. That's a cool place. Don't listen, I have no idea how this game works. Raisin, good morning! But Drew, that, that was a good point, that was a good point. I, I trust you on that one though, like with having like unique stuff. Raisin, let's go check out your zone. Dude, we're having a town hall meeting and I would love your input on this too. Um, as we're checking in. Um, but we're debating between growing to a hundred thousand in population? Uh, or do we just stick with the, like, do we uh go to a new city? Or we can just stick with this city, but then just clean up everything? Just make it all just better? And give everybody like just such a good life, it's gonna be like a dystopia and they're never gonna wanna leave. They're never gonna wanna leave. Ever. We're just gonna lock them in here in a little box of goodness and happiness and they're just gonna love it. Biggest Twitch allows. Dude, I'm telling you, when I first read the name, I had to literally like go like name by name. It's like three names in one. It's pretty dope. But dude, we're about to uh have another uh space launch over here, another rocket launch. This one uh is called the Pocket Rocket. And we're uh just getting to uh preparation stage, so we got our rocket coming in. Look at that, as the sun's hitting it. What a nice little view. The Chirpex Launch Site. Scientists have created a space-saving factory design. More efficient product lines are being installed as we speak. Where is that at? Charles Price, what the fuck are you? Oh yeah, dude, I forgot I made that tunnel! Holy fuck, dude, where's Chris? Chris would be so proud of me. Holy shit. Wait, where does this guy live? Charles Price. Dude, besides the Franklin. Okay, so, oh, in the Chester District, good, good, good. Cool beans, rocket launches are always good. Good. Yes. Uh, I think, so uh Drew, I think the goal with the launch uh is just like over time. Uh, and Raisin, if you know anything about this, please correct me. Um, but like over time, it just like kinda grows, like as far as like your little bar? Um, like just comes from being a productive city. And then uh when it launches, I mean, it just makes like happiness uh for everybody. Cuz everybody sees the rocket go up into space and they see how successful we are. Dude, this is not good. What zones are these? It's a mix. Interesting. Okay, they'll come back, all in due time. I'm not gonna feel bad about destroying anybody right now, but I don't want uh too many abandoned buildings just sitting around. Even if our economy is absolutely tanking right now, it's okay. Until we start going like super negative, I'm not gonna be like super worried about it. Let's see, how's this area look on raw materials? Good. Now that we had to tear down some of their neighbors, you know, I might as well make it look good. There we go. It'd be cool if it brought back new items you could build with. Bro, that'd be wild, like it brings back like alien technology. That'd be wild. Let's see, police departments, we only have two. I feel like I should definitely get like DLC for this. Or should, I mean, I'm definitely getting City Sidelines 2, uh when it comes out. Underground metro station? Hmm. I didn't even know I could have this. Should I put this here? Is there mods for this game? Oh dude, there's hella mods. Yeah. I, like, I probably could just get them. I don't know what this does. Elevated metro station. It's for the train. Right? Metro's train? I mean, that's buses that are over here, they're in blue. We really don't have a lot of bus lines. Uh, we got some going from like our cargo hub over here, our bus, uh, what is it, cruise ship, whatever. Also, this traffic diversion did not work at all how I wanted it to. Like they're definitely still just going this way. Which is, I guess it's okay? Some of them are going that way. You know? See where they go. Are they trying to get in? See, look at this, this is... Oh, it's parked. Oh, these cars are parked outside. What the fuck are you doing parked up? You're taking up traffic space, bro. I'd be so pissed. Owner Elizabeth Merton. Who's Elizabeth Merton? She's supposed to be just in this building? I guess she's in colossal lines? That did not work at all how I wanted it to though. Traffic over here is a lot better. I'm glad how this worked out cuz uh we diverted a lot of traffic from like this road over here. So that way, this is all clear for the trucks that are coming out of here. Let's see, what if we made this... Is this only a two-way? It is. We need to make this a four-way. We can keep it a two-way, but it's definitely gotta be a four-way. A four-way. That's a four-way. Can I upgrade this road too? No? I don't think so. Now it's working! Ay, carayu! That's all I needed, it was two lanes, bro! That's what I'm saying. So what if I went... Can I upgrade this to a one-way? Like, am I able to make this a one-way? It's in front of it? No, it's gotta have the two-way. Which is cool, we can rock with that, but at least this allows for a merge here. I guess we have to keep that two-way. Yeah, okay, okay, that works, that works. Yeah, the double lane was the issue there because they were coming into a like just two lanes, so if I like added that other one? Then these guys now are like, okay, we can come over on this side. They merge in on the left and then these guys go in on the right, or they just alternate, it looks like. It looks like a pretty efficient intersection, honestly. Cuz these guys still have to take time to like come in and like go and everything? Like, and actually pull into the harbor? So we might even need another diverger. Look at this, it's just diversion central. So we're, we're gonna have to do a little landscaping, that's okay. This city is about to be so fucking nice. It's gonna be so nice, you're, you're not even gonna believe it. You're gonna be like, how, how'd you even make it this nice? Oh, like how do I, how do I live here? When, when can I move? You can't. Can't live here. It's too exotic. It's too good. Alright. Let's see, cuz I don't want... You know what, I don't even think I need to do anything over there. Just get a little... Fish through right? I like the little Latin music we got going on. Right over the abandoned building. Uh... Not exactly where I wanted to take that. Just disappeared that car. Okay. Uh, this is only a one-way up here? Porque? Uh... As much as I appreciate that, it's only a two-way, so like, I'm still gonna connect it here? And then what I'm gonna do is come back and upgrade it to a four-way? That way these people could come down here potentially? We'll see if anybody actually turns left in here. So it looks like it's still only gonna be used as an exit? So we should, we could probably keep this a one-way. Let me see. I think that's what we'll just do. Alright, cool. Just watch them do a loop. Okay, so that should be better for traffic, I think. Why that road, or why that one would've been destroyed? We have no demand, still, for anything. Like, it's not necessarily that we're... I mean, we're down 4,000 a week, right now? You notice there's abandoned buildings? Abandoned buildings? Where? I don't see abandoned buildings. God, all in here. Public services are now available online. What's next? Ban sandals with socks? What do you mean? Bro, holy shit, dude. Is this the death of our city? What is happening? Bro, look, I'm about to make it like free to live here. Literally. Get an aid on each of these. Giving everybody major tax cuts. So hopefully that'll bring back some of our industry. Damn, we are draining money right now, though. This might not be a good decision. Fuck, dude. This is messy. This is messy. Dude, we're leaking money right now. And it's barely working. It's barely working. Dude. What do you mean? Not enough buyers for products! Bro, everything is falling apart right now. What the fuck? I cut your taxes in half! You arrogant cunt! Local governments... Fuck off! Now what the f... Bro! The music makes it sound even worse. Bro, what the fuck? Hey, Elisa... Where's James Chapman at? James Chapman, over at Neptune Media Store. About to blaze up. Never thought about how much garbage piles up in two weeks. Bro, I don't know what to do here. Homes of Tomorrow, okay, well, that's good. Got more people coming in? Very nutty. Very, very nutty. Why is this... Dude, I don't, I don't even know the solution to this. Other than destroy and just pray to fucking gods that they come back. Mr. Stark, I'm scared! Dude, it's so many, it's so many, and this is just like one little section. Oh my god. Holy shit. It's so many, it's so many. Good god. God damn, bro! This demolition derby over here. What a great city, I would think I'm dreaming if I didn't know otherwise. Yeah, I've... It's a nightmare for some of us. How? Did I just like put too much over here? Like, is this my fault? Riddle me this. What should we do? Congratulations. Oh, who won it? Most attractive city award! Is that Drew's Dami Mommy? That is Drew's Dami Mommy, congratulations. As always, the richest prevail. Okay, where... I don't know what to do here, bro. It's just, everybody's leaving. Everybody's leaving. We're down 44,000 a week. I've lost, I've literally thrown away $700,000 in the last like two days. Not even. And... For what? Let me raise their fucking taxes again. These insane people. Insane people. I don't know, like, does it indicate why they're leaving? You know, that's... Building was abandoned because no one was buying their product. So with the industrial areas, they're leaving because there's not enough commercial zones. And then with the commercial zones, they're not leaving because there's not enough industrial zones. Which is like, that's where the duality of how fucked the situation is. Cause it's like... Okay, well, I, if I redistrict these, like, I can only do a couple of them, or I, should I only do a couple of them, or should I redo the whole fucking thing? It's like, look, it's all industry in there. Like, how much of that do I really need to, like, get out? You know, to make a difference? Cause I think it's mainly a commercial issue? We have a lot of industry and a lot, and not a lot of commercial. Maybe that's it, maybe that's it. Build more commercial. What am I gonna do? What am I gonna do? I'm a mayor. I gotta... I gotta support my people. I hear one of the chirpeters. Ah! Look at that. Where are they from? Over here. Over in Cape Hope. Nice. Cape Hope is also, uh, not looking great right now. Not enough raw materials, not what I wanna see. Uh, you are getting replaced. Low density over here. Keep it consistent. Oh, that's all one right here. But then this commercial buildings, see, this is what doesn't make sense to me. Like... Home Improvement Center. Abandoned because, abandoned because there's no goods to sell. No goods to sell. But then we look at the actual districting, and it is fucking surrounded! Bro. Like, how are you gonna tell me you don't have enough goods to sell? When you are literally around nothing but industry? I quite frankly don't believe you. The raw, not enough raw materials, guys, these guys just straight up need to get replaced. We can't have that. Put another store right there. Another raw materials issue? What do these guys district it for? Forestry? It's a solvable issue, I got. Just gotta give them something. Little forest to fly through? You know? Where's this traffic coming in? God damn, that's a lot of traffic. Great view, though. Worry about that later. Yeah, they're fine, overall. I have heard that forestry industry, uh, takes away from farmland, though. So definitely something to keep in mind if you ever want to, uh, switch industries around. Uh, just don't put a bunch in one place, uh, if you plan on... Literally just watch them leave. Um, but don't put a bunch of forestry if you ever plan on switching it over to farming. But I think if you want to go from farming to forestry, you could do that. You notice the abandoned buildings? Shut the fuck up! Just rubbing it in my face. At least we're making money again. Like, if anything, I know how to be a profitable mayor, like... I, so, I think it's just gonna take time to balance these out. And just like... I guess we're just gonna have to deal with that? Like, none of the residents are leaving, it's all the businesses. You know, like... Really not off that bad. Cause there's not enough raw materials? Raw materials need for production, make sure trucks carrying them can reach the building. Where are they coming from? Oh, from here, oh, okay. That is a pretty interesting place for a harbor, or for a train station. Damn, we have a rainstorm. We just made this tunnel... Over, well, the tunnel's over in Drew's Dami Mommy, I guess. Not over in Kells Kingdom. Um, but we, uh, we definitely have an issue with these abandoned buildings. Like, I mean, like I said, I think it's just gonna take time. And just kinda rezoning, cause you see, like, every time I destroy one of the, uh, industrial, like, our commercial demand comes up a little bit more. Oh, we got five people in here, what's up, everybody? Welcome in. Um, but every time I destroy the, uh, industrial area, it just like... Brings our commercial demand up just a little bit, like, low demand, still no demand for industrial or office. Oh, offices count as industrial! Interesting. Did not know that, I definitely, uh, definitely thought they counted as, uh, commercial, just because they were blue. Why are you cutting down all the trees from deforestation? Well, hey, look! Wait, is that why they're like abandoned? Is that like the life cycle? Uh-oh. Where do we put an office in place? No, well, that's industrial. They don't have buyers. Give them buyers. Right there. Put another store over here. You know? Offices are industrial, dude, right? That's what I'm saying. Apparently. Then they're gonna build right on that, though, which is good. These guys don't have enough goods to sell. You know what? That's okay. I don't think you need to be here in the first place. Get out of my city! I'm gonna destroy this guy too. I mean, just because, like, you know, they're on a one-way going out of town, like, I'm not really worried about it too much. Yeah, I know, like, that's like, uh... I don't know, it kinda makes me look at, uh, Drew's Dami Mommy a little indifferently. Cause like, look how many offices we have over here. I thought that was all commercial I was putting. You know, like, technically speaking, but I, I guess not, it makes sense they don't have like a physical product to sell. That's okay, we'll just dezone it for now. We'll just carry on. Yeah, I don't like those with like one strip lines either. Need more jobs, uh, or is it the opposite? Uh, you know, that's, I, I don't think jobs are the issue. Um, I don't know how we check levels, what is levels? Why... I don't know what this means. Population? My cow was just saved by a smoke detector, nice. Outside connections, ooh. Good, wait, so... What do they need? They need a train station over here? Cause it sounds like that's what they need. Where's everybody gone? Holy shit, dude, we lost 2,000 people in population. Jesus Christ. Bro. Like, I literally can't even keep up. Like, I literally can't even keep up. What am I supposed to do? Oh, I am like concerned. Let's see, what if we put a cargo harbor? Over here? Dude, this might be too much. This might be too much to come back from. Like, I, like... Oh dude, I ha- I will say, I have my own music going right now. Dude, it might be time for a new city. Cause everybody just fucking dipped, bro. Yeah, the lightning, lightning kinda confirms. I think, uh, city board come up with anything more modern than farming. Uh, I think it's time for a new city, boys. I'm just like... It's painful. And we can bring back everybody's, like, everybody's region. You know, everybody can still get a new region. Alright, alright. We're gonna save this one. Man. Alright, society. Say, look, look at the last time. Oh wait, I, I thought it was gonna show us a picture of it. Okay, save. Over, yes. Damn, bro. Seventy-eight, seventy, seventy-seven thousand population. Where are we capped at? Damn! It's okay, it's okay. Alright. Where was our city at the first? Oh, it does. We had eleven thousand people. I just wanna see where we were at. So, from four-nine, this is actually, this is gonna be interesting. So in two weeks, we went from eleven point five thousand population up to seventy-six thousand population. Five million. From fifty-nine thousand to five million. Let's see. I just wanna see, real quick, what our city was like. Just to, just to get a peek. I think I'm gonna grab a drink and we're gonna start a new city. RIP Dolly Mommy. Hey, bro, it's a new region. You can have a new region, for sure. See. Okay, so this is, wow. Damn, it was just one square. This was our city. Uh, or I think this might be four squares? But this, see, this was your city. This was Florence Park before it all be- came. What it was! Alright, anyways, I'm gonna grab a drink real quick. Give me two seconds, and then we will build a new city! Whoa. I swear to god, every time I open up my fridge, if there's cheese in there, I'm grabbing a slice and I'm fucking eating it. Alright. This is gonna be interesting. A new city. Let's see. Here. Pop, pop, pop. Alright, there. Nice, alright. So we should be up to date. I'm gonna go ahead and unpin my message. Let's see, unpin this message. RIP Dolly Mommy. Alright. Alright, new game. Let's see, uh, ooh! This gives us like a new place to start from, too. I think Two Rivers was where we were. Shady strands. Sandy beach, ooh. River run. Lagoon shore. Islands. It might have been an islands. I don't know, or a green plan, green plains, Grand River. Boggy hills, that one, was that it? Cliffside Bay. Blackwoods. These are all DLC packs. Airports. Sunset Harbor. They have so many di- so many DLCs. Green cities. Okay, but how much? How much, though? Buy City Skylines. Content creator pack, that too. Three nineteen? Wow. Whoa. Never mind. Three hundred dollars? Well, six dollars for this one. Let's see, I'll think about that one. For six bucks. Natural... Have natural disasters? The Dust Bowl. That's cool, frosty rivers. Okay, where should we go? Uh, should we try, like, doing like a more industrial vibe, like, doing like like an oil or an ore industry? Farming resources. Forestry, amount of water, ore, oil. That one doesn't even have any oil. Could do the lagoon shore. I kinda like this one, like, on the coast, like... San Rico! I think this is the one, San Rico. Left-hand traffic, no. Custom map. Considerable area for building fifty-six percent. Not much, but we'll do it. San Rico, alright. Let's start off. Alright. Our new city. Let's take a gander. Dude, that looks like a fucking sperm. Yo. New city, Kells! Welcome in! Bro. I don't know where, Sperm Lake! Starting off strong! Okay, I don't know where to start. I don't have any resources. Do we have to unlock everything again? Okay, it's okay. It's okay. We're educated people now. We're educated people now. I can't even get a dirt road? How do, how do you, how does one start? City Skylines. Oh my god. Yeah, the fact, how, wait. We should probably, we should definitely like connect these. I mean, shit. Need a waterfront location on Sperm Lake? You know what? I think that's gonna be our first order of business is to expand out that way. Oh, okay. Thank, fuck. Okay, okay. Don't need this. Thank god. Okay. So we are gonna continue this. Here, we can, can we check the water flow? Nope, just traffic, okay. Make it curve, actually. Curving to the right today! There we go. Cause like, my goal is to have like, an intercoastal highway, right? Cause I'm, I'm thinking big picture, bro. I'm thinking, I'm a mayor. I'm an experienced city planner at this point, okay? I know what the fuck I'm doing. Alright, I'm a professional. Okay? So we're gonna build this intercoastal highway. And it's gonna sweep through majestically next to Sperm Lake. And then, uh, we're gonna have like an offshoot where it'll like, kinda like, go in there. This is gonna be a little expensive to maintain at first, but I think it's gonna be worth it, uh, like, in the end. In the end! Okay, see, so it's gonna, that's a little too close, I think. Uh, we're gonna come right the back over here. Do all these have a sidewalk? Oh, thank god. Do not wanna have a sidewalk. I do not wanna encourage psychism. Let's see. Here. And another swoopity swoop. Nice. Uh, too tight. Good, this in play? Game pause. Yeah, I know the game is fucking paused. Very good! Very good! Nice, look at that. So that way, automatically, we're keeping that flow of traffic just going around. We can always expand the highway, too. Um, and give them like a true two-lane experience going either way. But, for now, this, this is gonna work. It's gonna work. Like a little lasso. You know? Um, and then, so we're gonna have true exit ramps as well. Look at this, dude. It's, I'm telling you. We're getting professional. So we're gonna come here, go straight off. I think they should be able to just kinda slide off that way. They should be slowing up before the ramp either way. Keep an eye on what's going on around here. Hashtag "you found me." Build elevated roads with the page up key. You know what? Eventually, this will all be underground. It'll be like an underground perimeter, but like, for now, we're just gonna leave it as is. I'm gonna take some notes out of Chris's book on that one. Uh, let's see, okay. And... So then... Dude, two lane for now. We, I eventually wanna expand this one up to a four lane. We'll do this for now. This might be terrible? I don't know. How the fuck do you build an actual exit? Well, normally the highway goes over on, hold on, think about this like a city planner. This about to be big brain. Bro. I'm over here making overpasses and shit. Holy shit. I can't believe this. Dude. So professional already. Okay, so then, this is what I was gonna do. The one-way. Yo! Yo! That's a highway! That's like a legit fucking highway. Oh my god, bro. See, so we could do like a second road See, so we could do like a second road round. Should we have the highway come in on this side? Or should we make the other, like the exit highway, like kinda wrap this, and then we'll have like another bridge? I think that's what we'll do. But we're gonna get like your, uh, we're gonna get a little residential area over here started, so that way, Kells, you can get, uh, some neighbors. Boy, that just a little bit. Look at that. Houses on the hills. Okay, I think this is good to like start. And as far as water flow, it looks like water is flowing down this way, so we're gonna go ahead and pop our residential, first residential area. Right there. Just a couple houses right here. Excellent neighbor. Neighborhood area. What is this? Concord Street? This is gonna be a good one, neighborhood. Nice. Right next to the water. Gonna tell ya, down here, the sperm is gonna be just shitting. It's nice that we have a lake right here, though. That means this is gonna be perfect, so we can build a dam like right here and have our shit just going off right here. Works out perfect. Let's see, we got another... There, these are gonna be some nice houses over here. I mean, this is gonna be like top-tier real estate. Oh my god, dude, it works just so legit. Nice, we got our first move-ins! Sweet! Alright, so we're gonna go ahead and pipe this to... Right under the street. Pretty damn realistic, if you ask me. Nice. And so we're gonna have water pumps from the lake. Ah, yeah, same. Perfect. So we're gonna have it pumping... All the way right here. Ah, I don't need to build it on that way. So they have water... And then electricity. Coal, we can't see the natural resources on coal, but those do, cause those do run out. They do run out of coal, like it literally like takes up the ore out of the, uh, ground, uh, which is something that I did not know. Um, let's see, where's our wind grid? Ah, I... Dude, we need the advanced winter, 2,400 population? Dude, as soon as we get it. That's actually pretty worth it. How much does it cost? 12,000, so it's double the cost, and like three times the upkeep cost per week. But, double the output. Eh, it's kinda worth it. Here, right by the lake. We'll eventually move this, uh... Which? We gotta get power lines. They should have water and power now. Uh, pumping station does not have power. There it is. I was waiting for that. I was like, it's not gonna work forever. So eventually, we're gonna make this lake a more like actual residential area. But for now, we just kinda gotta... Get some people in here. Oh yeah, they need sewage too. 16,000 population, damn. It should be good. We'll go ahead and start our commercial district over here. Should've made this a little bit bigger. It's okay. It's okay. Alright. Why do we have no people? I literally gave them sewage. Oh, no power to... Goddamn. It's not like I was running a very successful city or anything. And my... May or may not have died off. Why is our happiness terrible? They're not producing a lot of shit right now. Doesn't seem like anybody's taking a dump. This is such a nice little coastal area, bro. Give them shopping right over here. I think this is how we should keep all of our cities in this area, like just low, low density, low maintenance, just... They're gonna enjoy their time over here. Little corner house right here. See, I think that's what I got away from in the last one. Was like respecting the topography, you know, or something like that. The distance or the difference, the different spaces that everybody needs. See, as long as there's good, like, transportation from this area, then they're good on, uh, industry, I would think. What you mean, need power? Don't you have neighbors? Not building industry right by them. All into fancy villas. Urban areas offer citizens apartment houses, moving to high-density residential, especially young adults especially. Oh, maybe that's why I had like an aging population. I didn't have like a balance of like the two types of, uh, things. Small stores and cozy boutiques offer citizens a place to spend their money. Low-density commercial zones can provide the necessities for the nearby low-density residential areas, okay? High-density commercial buildings are department stores and supermarkets that offer citizens a wide variety of spending possibilities that can serve a large number of customers, so they are ideal for high-density residential areas, okay? Industry uses a water, a lot of water and pollution, or in producers, in produces ground pollution to its surroundings. Be sure to place industrial zones a safe distance from any residential areas. Okay, what's our budget at? Dude, we don't have taxes or anything? Never gonna cut this. Can't be spending all this money. Especially on water right now. Goddamn. This is good. This is a goodwill start. We're gonna build this out just a little bit more, and like really establish our, ourselves. I don't want them to be too big. With the industrial right there. Oh, they need water. Nice, and for power... Is that in? They'll have it in no time. Go ahead, gym and shower, talk to you later. Bro, thank you for stopping in, brother. I appreciate it, and soon enough, we'll have another region named after you, so I'll keep you in the loop on it. Um, but thank you again, bro. Let's see. Kinda keep this a little square. I'm trying to learn from my mistakes, you know, from last time. Much love, much love, brother. Thank you. And new follow, pay me when you're live, dude, I got you. Dude, of course. Yeah, Sunday, 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 Sunday. Sunday's always a good day for some streaming. But, dude, I think I might be doing, might be doing a little gunfight stream here in a minute, uh, potentially. Um, I'm definitely gonna be, uh, switching over to play some gunfighting, uh, but I don't know 100% if we're gonna be live necessarily for it. Um, let's see, I think we're just gonna expand the industrial area over here. Keep it rocking as is. What do you mean you don't have enough power? Oh, they... Now that we actually have industry, we need power. Just bring it up casual. Making a building historical? Nah, I'm good. I would like them to continue to evolve. Uh, please. Let's see, we could... I don't wanna put more industrial over here, but I kinda have to. Trying to get this to connect. On the power grid at least. I don't wanna put people's houses too close to a lot of industrial there. You know what I mean? Like, we could put some houses over here. Ice cube factory. Of course, naturally. Radarware Limited, the box factory, another ice cube factory. They really need ice cubes over here. There's a high demand for ice cubes, apparently. But... Okay, well, our new city is looking good. We got 158 people here. Uh, we need to build some more houses. Um, but that is all good. Get another house on the corner right there, another one right there, another one right there, another one right there, boom! Look at that. And then we'll put a little commercial buffer. Put a little commercial area over here too. Well, no, we can keep them separated. Roads now have names. Nice. Okay, so we need to go ahead, I think we need to go ahead and build our exit highway. We're gonna go ahead and build the exit highway, and I think that's gonna be the stream, cause we've been going for almost two hours now. Um, so a little bit longer than I would've liked, but we're still, we're chilling, bro. I'm having a good time. Let's see. Does it need going this way? So, and then it's gonna come back in over this way. To leave out over here. Okay. Think I have the vision in my head. Not enough money. I forgot about the upkeep cost of the rivers. You're definitely like pre, pre-hyping our infrastructure for sure. Those corner buildings built in. Goddamn, I forgot about that. Well, it's a good thing we know how to make money, so at least making money is not the issue. But, hmm. That brings a interesting situation. So I was just gonna... Oh wait, no, this... Dude, I fucked up already. Cause this was supposed to be coming back the opposite way on it. Hate how that was. God, we really do not have a lot of money right now. Alright, but we do have a demand for residential, so let's get these fuckers in here. Alright, but we do have a demand for residential, so let's get these fuckers in here. Very nice! A little interior neighborhood too. Very sweet. I don't think I wanna put anybody's house over there. Put a little commercial to block them out. Alright. Oh god, and they need more power. Alright, so we're gonna set our budget correctly. Should be good. Once we get 2,400 people in here, I'm putting in advanced one turbine, and, advanced one turbine. But... Until then... Oh, and these... Anyways. These people complaining about not enough electricity, shut up! Alright, I'm gonna leave it here for now, uh, at our new city of 370 people. That's it, as a small city. Uh, tis but a small hamlet. Um, but yeah, I'm gonna save here. Let's see, what is our new city gonna be called? Uh, San Rico. Nice. Save? Perfect. Alright, awesome. Thank you guys so much for joining, as always, and, uh, I'll see you in the next one. Peace!